Attorney Baldwin on the line? Attorney Baldwin on the line? And Anthony's here, and Gerald. Okay. All right. Let's get started. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible in liberty, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three, to consider an act upon the minutes of May 4th of 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I will second that.
Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item number four are resignations. To hear and consider an act upon the following resignations. I'm just going to go through them each, and then we can make comments. Board of Finance is Ed Bateson, who is resigning from his seat from the term of Board of Finance. He resigned on May 10th. Economic Development Commission, David Fogel, is resigning from his seat on that commission. And we have Rishi Narig, who's also resigning from that. And on the representative town meeting, Michael Mahoney, who is resigning from his term. And I just want to start off by saying, I appreciate everyone's efforts, all four of these individuals who have served our community in various capacities. And as you know, it's a lot of work to serve our town on numerous boards. I would just most notably say, I appreciate Ed Bateson's long service, especially on the Board of Finance. Over the last two years, it hasn't been much of a fun ride for any of us. So I do want to especially note that. And I'll just open it up to the board for any comments.
Yeah, if I might, I would like to echo your thanks to all of them for all their service, and particularly point out Ed. You know, RTM Board of Selectmen, he's done it all for the town, and he's done it all while growing a business, a small business. Brenda, you guys, you and Peter know something about that. It takes a lot of sacrifice. And I just cannot commend him enough for everything that he's done. And I greatly appreciate his service on the Board of Finance. That was actually to fill my seat, what was my seat at the time. And I wish him the best as we move forward, and hopefully he'll continue to serve the town in a different capacity, and the other two gentlemen as well. I thank them for their service on that very important commission.
And echoing what you both just said, Ed Bateson is a lifer, but we got to know each other when we served on the RTM together. And Ed has always been thoughtful, and sat down with me when we would have good discussion back and forth as we served our district. And the same with Michael. I want to wish him well on his next endeavor. I know, Ed, this is not the last we're going to hear from him, certainly. As far as David Fogel's concerned, I've said lots of nice things about him as he was signing on to serve on economic development. I think he will be well-served and a great addition to the Board of Finance. Very thoughtful, and really sound great resume that will, I think, he will be a great addition where Ed leaves off. And just to Rishi, I want to thank him for his service and wish him the best.
Thank you both. So we will now move to item number five. I'm not sure if David was able to call in. He may have had a conflict with work. I don't see him on. But the next item is appointment. To hear and consider an act upon the following appointment to the Board of Finance, David Fogel of Merwin's Lane. And he will be filling the vacancy of Ed Bateson. And I would just like to echo the comments of Nancy. David is very thoughtful, and I was excited when he was able to step up for the Economic Development Commission. But then this new opportunity arose. And I think it's just such a great fit for David with all his experience, which we are all pretty familiar with. I think he's going to bring a wealth of information and be so helpful for our community. And I really do appreciate his willingness to step up and fill this role. And I'll just open it up to the board for any comments.
Yeah, I would like to, considering Nancy already commented on David, I've gotten the opportunity to know him through the past number of years. His credentials and his experience speak for themselves. And as usual, Fairfield is lucky in that we have a deep bench to pull from of talented individuals to serve the community and people willing to step up. And David has always done that. And I appreciate him doing it again and look forward to working with him.
All right. So do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is item number six. This is actually just not a voting item, but for information only, an Economic Development Commission appointment to fill vacancy created by Mr. Fogel with Kenneth Hauzer. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. And I don't know if Kenneth is on the line. Actually, Kenneth was recommended by Selectwoman Lefkowitz. And I'm excited to have him join our Economic Development Commission. And I'm not sure if he's on the line or not.
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes. Welcome.
Great. Thank you. Glad to be here.
Well, I just want to first off by saying thank you for stepping up and agreeing to fill this seat and also just wanting to be on the Economic Development Commission. This is really important to me. We're actually trying to come up with some creative ideas by administration to bolster the Economic Development Commission a little bit more, to put some more meat into it. When I first took on this role, economic development has been a very important priority for me in my administration. And then obviously COVID pushed us off the rails a bit. And so we went from promoting to saving. So now I hope we're getting back to the thankfully, I just want to say, gratefully, we maintained pretty much the majority of our businesses in town. And we've done better than other communities. So, but we're looking to do some new things to try to beef it up a little bit. So I'll be looking forward to meeting with you in the coming months, Kenneth.
Likewise, likewise. Look forward to being part of this, too.
That's great. Do I want to open it up to anyone who would like to make a comment on the board?
Thank you for serving, and best of luck to you in this. And I echo Brenda's comments about the importance of this board and what we're trying to achieve over the next several years.
And I'll jump in, given the importance of this board and the comments that the first Selectwoman and Mr. Flynn just made. Rare is the resident of town who at a polling station will actually really stop and ask questions that are really specific and targeted to the growth and who we are as a community. And that was Kenny. And I have to say, I didn't even know what political party he was in until I was looking to make this recommendation. And I think that's a real testament to who he is and who he is as a resident of this community and his desire for, and I'll speak to you directly, and your desire for what's best in the town. And I think you will be a real asset to this community and this commission. So I'm so happy that the timing worked and that there's this availability and that we're supporting you here and that you're on the agenda. So I look forward to casting my yea vote.
Oh, that's awesome. Me, too. When do we go? When do we go?
Right now. Well, actually, this is this is for information purposes only because it's just an appointment by me. So
There you go.
You're automatically on, Kenny.
You have my yea.
All right.
But Nancy would have voted for you anyway.
She absolutely would.
Early and often.
Well, congratulations, and thank you again.
No, thank you. Oh, my pleasure. My pleasure.
So item number seven. And we do have I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, can I waive the readings for the items seven through 12? And then we can discuss them as they are in the context of, does that seem?
Absolutely. That's fine.
So I'll make a motion to waive the readings for items seven through 12.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I just want to say, we have a number of lease agreements and purchasing items. And I believe all but one, I think the town attorney had well, he reviewed all just for everyone's edification. He obviously reviews. We review them before they get placed on the agenda. There was one I know that town attorney wants to talk about later. But I'm just going to open it up. So item number seven, we have Gerald Foley and Anthony Calabrese here to present. And I will open it up to you two gentlemen.
Yes, good afternoon, everybody. This is Gerald Foley. So yeah, item number seven, we were asking to enter into a two-year lease agreement with a company called Citizens Food. They're going to be providing the basically, it's a concession at Lake Mohegan. And they're the only participant in an RFP that we did. So for season 2021, which is forthcoming within a few weeks, $1,500. And then season 2020, it's for $1,600. So for the both seasons, it's $3,100.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, how does the annual fee compare to what we've gotten in the past?
It's lower. It's definitely lower than we've gotten.
What did you get in the past?
I don't know off the top of my head. Anthony may bill a chime in. But I know that it is less than what we had gotten previously. We had another company that was doing it for many years. And for whatever reason, he opted not to participate this year. And we've got this other company.
I think he took over another establishment, if it's the same gentleman I'm thinking of.
Yeah, I think it is.
Yeah. So Anthony, do you know what the difference is between what they were paying and what they're paying now? And why did we lower it?
It's $500, and it's a public RFP. So, you know, we don't set the price. They submit their prices.
Got it. And we only had one bidder?
That's correct.
Does that does that mean our RFP was not and I don't please don't take this as a criticism, but was there something in our RFP that was off? That would that never sounds good when you have one bidder?
Yeah, for some of our sites, the concessions, we typically only get one bidder. There's this one, and there's a couple others that will get one. Maybe if we're lucky, we get two. But this particular site, I think it's a remote site. And what it is is they're restricted on what they can do at the site. So at this particular site, you can only you can't prepare food. You have to basically sell prepackaged food. So I think in some regards, that somewhat limits what the concessionaire can actually provide to the public. And hence, when he can do that, I think it diminishes the cost that we're going to get for it.
Is that because of the layout and the materials and what's available there that they can't prepare any food on the premises?
No, it has to do with the health department requirements. So what happens is you have the way that it's structured is you have levels. So this is the lowest level of a concession. Like Penfield Pavilion is example is that they have a full kitchen so that they can provide a higher level of service. But this particular facility is a very low level of concession. So in other words, what would happen was is a concessionaire would have to invest in it and/or the town would have to invest in it to give you higher capabilities to basically to sell prepared food.
Anthony, just a quick follow-up on that. Are we missing an opportunity here? Has it ever been looked at that we should do more? Or is this just kind of what it is?
No, I would say, yes, we are potentially missing an opportunity. But it's going to take significant funds to rebuild that building and put what could potentially be up there. But again, part of our master plan will identify that in the coming months and potentially a year. But yeah.
So this will be considered as part of that strategic plan you're putting together for Park and Rec? And there is a potential here to have to redo something. And there is a building limitation on what can be done presently, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And we're confident I mean, I read you included a lot of material here. But we're confident that the RFP did not exclude anybody. It wasn't so narrow as to kind of predefined the result. I just want to hear that that's the case.
No, I don't think it did. I don't think it was narrow enough. It was, I don't think we but to Anthony's point, I think if the facility had some enhancements, yeah, you would definitely get more people. But I guess it's also a low-traffic area as far as the concessions are concerned. So therefore, they don't do as well. So therefore, that's why they're paying us lesser rents.
Yeah, but we could be yeah, but that could be because it's prepackaged food. I mean, it could be the chicken and the egg. Mr. Baldwin has something he wants to say here.
Yeah, just in terms of the financials, there's also a clause in here that says the town shall receive 2% of the profits, if that makes you feel any better about the situation.
Yeah. I mean, that's not yes, thank you, Jim. Yeah. Okay. And do we know does this this vendor has operated similar facilities? This isn't a rookie? This is a known vendor? Or what do we know?
Well, from what I can read from his profile, it appears that he's worked with other people. But I'm not sure. So it might be to your point, this might be his first standalone one that he's doing. But it looks like he's worked in partnership with other people.
Have we garnered references?
I looked through his references, but haven't physically called his references.
Can we do that, please?
Yes. Yep, I can take care of that.
Anthony, do you know anything about this?
He worked with the previous vendor that was there. So I do know that he has that experience. But I think Gerald's right. I think this is his first operation. Again, for a small operation, this is probably the best place for somebody getting into the business to start.
Agreed. Agreed. Okay. Just check on that if you wouldn't mind. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll just echo that. I don't think it hurts just to make that call.
Yep.
Thank you. Nothing further from me. Yeah.
And nothing from me.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no further comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And the next item. Where are we? Item number eight, we waive the reading. This is another lease agreement. And we have Anthony and Gerald back up to bat. Okay, take it away.
Okay. So what we have here before you is we want to enter into a lease agreement with a company called TCF to basically acquire an additional group of carts. We want to get 20 golf carts. What we're trying to do is to match the existing fleet. So what we did is we went out to bid for basically to purchase, lease, and/or to rent carts. So we had a company that we had two companies that made submissions. The company you have before you is the one that gave the best offer. So we want to lease 20 carts. They're used carts, but they're it's 2018 Easy Go, their model RXV, which is in the language. Basically, these match the carts that are up there now. And so our intent is to lease them only for 20 months. And the rationale behind that is we have 60 carts that are on lease now. Those 60 carts will be coming up next December. So the intent is to lease these carts until the other lease comes up. And at that time, we'll go out to bid for actually 80 carts. So we'll turn in the 60 that we have on file now and the 20 that we'll be getting. And then we'll be leasing an additional 80 carts. But the rationale for the carts before you now is that the golf course is running out of carts. In other words, the 60 that they have, they're used all the time. And so if we had more carts, we could rent more carts. And in essence, we could make more revenue with them. So that's why you have before you the request to get these additional carts.
Okay.
Is there any questions from the board?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
So Anthony, how many carts we presently have up there?
We currently have a fleet of 60.
And we're running out of carts?
Specifically during tournaments and events, yes.
How's that possible? Yeah, go ahead.
Most it depends on the size of the tournament. But most tournaments, you try to get 144 golfers out there within the four-hour period. Shotgun start. That's putting everybody out on the course all at once. We always historically have rented the additional 20 carts. Due to COVID, COVID has added an extra wrinkle, which I know we're at the end of COVID right now. But we do have people that still are comfortable with single riders. So, you know, we the Golf Commission did increase the fee for a single rider. So if you wanted a single cart when you go up there on your own, you would pay an additional fee. But I wouldn't say that that's the norm. This is primarily for outings and events.
So, okay. How many outings or events do we have scheduled right now?
I believe we have 15 on the book.
Okay. And they're during weeks? And that's this summer?
Yeah, they're typically on Mondays. Now, I would not assume that we're going to get these carts until the end of the summer, just with the way that COVID has wreaked havoc on delivery times and lead times on everything. I think we're looking towards the end of the summer would be my guess.
I mean, I guess what I don't understand, just help me with the math, and maybe I'm just not thinking about it the right way. 18 holes, two carts a hole, 36. 36, some single riders. Let's raise that to like 46. Let's say. I mean, how are we getting up to 80 carts?
You put out multiple carts. So there might be two or three groups on each hole. So again, the number you need is divided by 144.
Okay.
Can I jump in and just well, the math is somewhat irrelevant if it covers itself and pays for itself. So is that the bottom line?
That is the bottom.
Not that it's irrelevant, but so all those numbers are well and good. But if it's covering itself, then I have no objection.
And that was what we did with I believe this came up at the Board of Finance through this last budget cycle where we added $60,000 to the expense and then $60,000 for the revenue to offset it.
Right. I just want to make sure it's not a thing where we have a bunch of carts out of commission so that even though we have, you know, 80, we've got 20 at any given time that we're not keeping up with or they're not operational. So we're increasing our expense to do that versus, remember, we lost the mechanic up there, et cetera, et cetera. I just want to make sure how we're handling this. That's what I'm trying to do.
Yep, understood.
Yeah. And I wasn't being dismissive, Tom. I just meant
I got it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Is there if there's no further questions on this item? I would ask all in all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Item number nine. For this item, this is a five-year agreement. Okay, item number nine. For this item, um, this is a five-year agreement, and we have our CFO, Jared Schmidt, along with Mr. Foley to present.
Yes, so hi, this is Gerald Foley again. So what we have before you is, is, um, we went out for an RFP to hire an Accurarial Consulting Services firm. Um, it's going to be for the town and for the Joint Retirement Investment Board. We had eleven companies that made submissions. Uh, we went through a vetted process where we had, uh, shortlisted to three companies. Three companies were invited to make presentations. And of the three companies that presented, uh, Millman was the one that was, has been recommended. Um, so you have before you a, uh, an award for five years, basically covering fiscal year twenty-twenty-two through fiscal year twenty-twenty-five.
I have a question. I see Carolyn Trubuco on, um, this call. Can we hear from her as a a member of that recommending body?
Absolutely, sure. I, we, uh, I'm also a member of the board, and we had pretty long meeting. Carolyn?
Yeah, we had a really long meeting.
Very long. Um, but go ahead, uh, sure, Carolyn, if you'd like to chime in, that'd be fine.
We, we did, we did a, a good process, right, with Gerald's help? Um, we, we put out the RFP, it took us several months to do, we had a full team kind of evaluating the respondents, we narrowed it down. Um, and the board, you know, the board, the board voted in favor of Millman. Um, I'm delighted to say that there's a five-year agreement uh, as part of this contract and not a, not a never-ending one. Um, and, you know, these are, these, these fees will be paid for out of the pension trusts. Right, these anticipated will be paid out of the pension directly.
The, um, can I ask, how do the fees compare to the fees that we were paying?
Yeah, it's a, um, well, it comes in about a thousand dollars per year less in the bid. However, what Millman is, has presented to us is significantly more robust, kind of, in, in our view, kind of educational content and analytical content that comes with the reports that will come to us. So, a slight, you know, very modest, if not savings, but a real pickup in terms of, um, educational content and insight from the work.
Great. I am familiar with Millman from my professional life, and they are a very reputable organization, so from that perspective, I'm very comfortable with this. I'm glad to hear the finances, uh, worked out, and that you also had a robust, uh, bid process. It also makes sense to me, given the nature of their work, and how it impacts our long-term liabilities calculation, that you would go for a five-year, uh, contract on something like this. So, I'm supportive.
Is there any other discussion on this item by members?
Nope, nope, not for me.
Thank you. Okay, well, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, thank you. Thanks, Carolyn.
Bless the luck.
Good to see you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item number ten, uh, is, uh, uh, John is going to be presented by Jared Smith, and also, uh, John Marsilio, who might, who should be on the line, and our, uh, uh, Superintendent Bill Norton, and Laura Pooley, who we're calling in. And we also have our attorney, uh, John Stastrom, on counsel on the line. And I'm going to hand it over, this item, just for everyone's verification, does require, uh, Board of Finance and RTM approval. So I'm going to, uh, ask for a motion to approve. And then we can second it, and then we can open it up for presentation.
I'll move it.
Second, I'll second it.
Thank you. Uh, who wants to take the lead here? Uh, gentlemen, Jared, go right ahead.
All right, thank you, and, uh, good afternoon to everybody. I'm just going to give a quick background on what it is, what has happened, and then, uh, what we're looking for here, what the request is here. Uh, since the first authorization in twenty-fifteen, there have been a few changes to the amount of money needed for the, for the project, as well as the, uh, the amount of grants and the amount of bonding. Uh, and the, the, if you look at the preamble of the resolution, that kind of lays it all out, uh, in a timeline format of what has happened along the way. I won't go into detail there, but if you have questions afterward, we can talk more about it. Um, so, but just to kind of summarize what has happened, and there's a spreadsheet at the end of the packet, at the end of this portion of the packet, that tracks the, uh, the history of approvals. And so what you see in looking at that is that the, uh, the cost of the project increased from about three million dollars to just over seven point seven million dollars. Uh, and it's, and seven point four of that was the amount that was authorized to be bonded. Uh, so that's where we stand right now. It stands at seven point seven million dollars. Uh, in addition to that, what was adopted by the towns, um, was that the town is currently responsible for paying only three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of the cost. WPCA is, is responsible for paying three point seven million, and then the remaining amount is paid for by grants. So what we're proposing here is, is threefold. There is a one million eight hundred eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollar increase in the amount of the appropriation. So that brings the total to nine, just over nine point six million dollars. Uh, and this, it, the increase of this is related to contamination. So when they're, as they're constructing, before they started construction of the berm and putting the wall in, they discovered contamination there. And so that needed to be dealt with, remediated, disposed of, et cetera. So that's the, uh, the additional amount that's required to do that. So, oh, that, that's the first element of it, is the increase, the, uh, first resolution has an increase in the appropriation. The second element of, of that first, uh, authorization is a reduction in the bond authorization from about seven point four million down to just under six million dollars. Uh, this is because the grants for this project have come in, we know that they're there, and so we're able to use that funding, the funding from those grants to pick up some of the capital costs related to this.
Can I ask you a question on that, Jared?
Sure.
We, we're confident that we don't need to approve the higher amount, um, to enable you to expend the grant money. Um, I, in the past, we've had situations where we've had to, um, approve a higher amount, even though we've know that there's grant money coming in.
Right, so that's where the, that first bullet comes, the first item comes into play, the one, one million eight hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. That is the additional amount needed to be appropriated, so that we can spend that money. So.
Okay.
That, that's what brings the total up to nine point six million dollars, and that's what we're asking to be, uh, the appropriation amount that we're asking to be approved.
And just so we're clear, that it, it, being off by this amount of money, and I appreciate you going through kind of the sordid history of this, but this is entirely the result of contamination found?
This additional amount, yes, that's my understanding, that the additional one point, almost one point nine million is related to contamination.
Now, is this contamination that we believe was part of the whole fill pile, um, situation as opposed to contamination that existed there anymore?
It is not related to the fill pile, and, uh, Laura or John Marsilio are on the line to give you, if you want further explanation of what's causing it, they can provide that.
I think I know, but I would like that just on the record for our meeting, please.
Well, I could, I could start, Laura, and then you could, you can, uh, get into the more granular portions of this. There's three levels of, of fill that are out on the, uh, on that site. One is the fill that was brought in before nineteen seventy-two. Uh, the other contamination came from industry in the town of Fairfield, which was below that. And then, uh, the third element down there in that zone is the fill pile. What we're dealing with for the most part on the hardening project is that historical fill. Um, it was fill that pre-existed any of the fill pile operations, or any of that, for the most part.
Okay, so, yeah, so let me ask you a question on that. Did we not then, and I know you weren't here, John, did we not test, uh, prior to doing the budgeting in this, and appreciate the fact that there would be uh, remediation costs associated with this regardless of the fill pile? Because what it sounds like you're saying is, the fill pile situation and some of that fill didn't help this. But in reality, this issue existed previously, and probably should have been considered, and this is my wording, not yours, in the original scoping and evaluation of this project. Am I wrong on that?
Well, just from what I could see, and I don't, um, Laura can give you the actual history of this, but from what I could see, because of the fill pile, we, we have proceeded in a fishbowl down there. When the, when the fill pile issue emerged, uh, the, the regulating agencies, uh, became, uh, involved with both feet down there, and consequently, everything, everything and anything that we did down there, uh, became scrutinized, and, uh, there is no choice anymore as to uh, what we have to do.
Right.
We, we do testing, we send it up to EPA and ETEEP, and they review, and they suggest, and then they come down with their opinions, and that's what we have to do.
John, are we dealing with this all over town, kind of, eh, that same kind of mindset because of this issue?
Well, let me just say that we've, we, we're dealing with it all over town, because there, there's fill pile issues where, where material has been transferred from the fill pile that we have, uh, what we call the known sites.
Right.
That material has, uh, uh, been relocated, and those we've, we've shared with EPA and DEEP. This isn't one of them. This hardening project was pre-existing material that, um, that had, had been filled in in that area, uh, when it was legal to fill it in prior to nineteen seventy-two.
Right. No, but I guess what I'm saying, I guess where I'm going with it, and forgive me, is, as a former auditor, the way I would re, in, in my vernacular, I would say is, it's basically an expansion of scope. The fill pile issue has raised the level of testing and raised the bar, then in all these issues, we have to be extra cautious, and in fact, the states involved and, and other organizations are involved in the testing. So, whereas there might not have been as high a bar if it wasn't for the fill pile issue in the construction of the berm, due to the fill pile issue, at least what you're saying, it brings an additional layer of scrutiny that, that requires it all to be remediated. Is that kind of a fair way to say it?
That's exactly spot on, Tom.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what's happening here.
Okay, and can we anticipate this happening in other areas too, for other projects around town?
Well, um, can we anticipate what happening?
This higher level of scrutiny is going to be required.
Uh, I think if we're prudent, the next project we do in town, we will do a much more subsurface, um, investigation. And, uh, hopefully, we, we can, um, minimize what this, uh, could possibly, you know, mushroom into. So, um, I mean, that's the best I could tell you. I know in other parts of town, and in, uh, overabundance of caution, we have done testing and, uh, uh, you know, if it's not PCC, I mean, that's good, good news. But, but you'll always find contamination, no matter where you look in, in a town that's, uh, the age of Fairfield. So, right now, we're, we're under the microscope and, uh, we're, we're, I, I don't want to use the word hostage to the regulators, but, you know, we're, we, we are obligated to deal with them.
No, we want to do it the right way. So, my last question on this item would be, um, how, how comfortable are we? Did you go to a bid process? Like, how do you know that this is the cost to remediate this? Or we just go in with the vendor that we've already been using? Just give me comfort that we've done our, uh, the appropriate level of care before we spend this money.
So, uh, this money is kind of incremental. Uh, we have gone down the aisle, we're at the altar, and we've used, uh, the, the same consultants, the same, uh, contractor, and it's virtually impossible to change courses now. But with that said, we also have a history of what these, uh, tests have cost, the number of tests and the like. So, uh, we have ample opportunity to compare what has to be done with what has been done, and, uh, that's the best we can do at this point.
Yeah, I'm going to ask it, thank you, I'm going to ask a silly question, it's going to go to Mr. Baldwin, just based on what you just said. Mr. Baldwin, I know we've had some issues with some of the environmental vendors we've used in the past. I'm assuming that the vendors that are part of this and that we've, uh, engaged and are using on this, we don't have those issues with. Is that, can you just confirm that? Just want that on the record.
Issues is kind of a broad term, but we have our, we do have our environmental, uh, council, uh, reviewing these, uh, with uh, those vendors, and, and, um, we're confident that they're doing an adequate job for the town.
Is, is there any issues? Uh, the, the first select woman had indicated that there were some contracts before us today, and one of them you had, uh, she didn't say any issue with, but question on or follow-up item. Would this be that contract or no?
Uh, I would, I would have to defer to, uh, to the first select woman to answer that question.
So, Jennifer told me there was just one item that you hadn't, uh, that you wanted, you, you still were reviewing. Um, I don't, no, not this one. Was there another contract or something on here that you maybe hadn't fully signed off on before we posted the agenda? Or maybe I misunderstood?
No, that, that, that's correct, but I have since then reviewed all the agreements, and, and we've made some minor changes to them to our satisfaction.
And that's what's before us now and what we're approving today, Mr. Baldwin.
Uh,
Yep.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you for indulging me, uh, Mr. Marsilio, thank you for the answers, and I'll turn it back over to my colleagues.
Nancy, do you have any, um?
Uh, no, I feel Mr. Flynn was very thorough, so thank you. Um, no questions.
All right, so, you know, obviously, this is not a great news, um, you know, having to spend this money, nobody wants to spend this money, it's not great. Um, but we have a responsibility to do the right thing, and that's what we're going to do. So if there's no further dialogue, I will ask, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Can, uh,
Oh.
Uh, Madam First Selectwoman, can I make one comment on this? While we move forward? Can we ask, given, given this item and the fact that we just had to approve additional expenditures, the one item I'd, I'd love to get an update on in our, hopefully our next regularly scheduled meeting, but, um, if not, the meeting just after that, I'd like to discuss the, uh, the FEMA reimbursement at Penfield Pavilion, and get kind of an update on all that. Um, I think it's important that this board hear what's, what's going on and what's transpired there. And, um, particularly since it's, it's come to our attention, obviously, that, uh, some FEMA reimbursement we, we were led to believe we would get, uh, we are not getting, uh, we've already approved the bonding on that item, uh, quite some time ago, but I would like to know kind of the, the chapter and verse, and where's that stands, if you don't mind, um, at a future date. And I think you know, I think you've assigned that to Mr. Bremmer, I think was, um, walking through that item. I might be wrong, but I think that's what I understood.
Yeah, so the Board of Finance got an update on a whole bunch of items, um, you probably heard that. Um, yeah, we don't, I mean, we, this is obviously complicated situation, there's a lot of information, we're actually doing some additional uh, review. I mean, we all know we're at the four point three, uh, we didn't, we're not getting reimbursed. Um, so that's, that's that. Um, additional information on that, we could put something together. Um, I'm not sure how quick we'll be able to pull a whole bunch of stuff together, but obviously, it's not good news, it's more unwelcome news um, about all of that.
Yeah, I would like to hear that, and I did, and because I was serving on the Board of Finance at the time, we did have a lot of back and forth with, uh, the previous administration, as well as outside consultants that were brought in by that administration to assist us in the FEMA, um, application process. And some of the things I heard and some of the things I saw in the Board of Finance presentation, uh, were inconsistent with things we were told, um, quite some time ago. And, and I would like to, um, uh, get a better understanding of that, because it's, it's truly, um, it's something that we went through, um, from the Board of Finance level pretty hard, uh, and to find out that it was just a, a blanket no. Um, I would like to understand a little bit more if, if we might, I think it's important that this, this body hear that when it's available. If that's a couple of meetings from now, I'm fine with that, uh, but I would like to get an update, please.
Absolutely, as soon as we were able to pull all of that together.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item is eleven, and, um, same, uh, group of individuals who are presenting, and, uh, this is, um, regarding an allocation resolutions for the WPCA, and I'll hand it over, uh, Jared. You're leading on this?
Sure.
Sure, thank you. Oh, before we start, Jared, can I just get a motion to approve this item? I apologize.
So moved.
I'll second it. Thank you. Okay, Jared, go right ahead.
Sure. This is a companion piece to the last one, the last item on the agenda, or the previous one, I should say. Um, and what this does is it addresses the change in allocation of the cost between the town and WPCA. Um, so, really in short, the allocation of the expenses, uh, that have been approved to date remain the same. So whatever, uh, up to now, whatever amount the WPCA was slated to spend, that's what they're, that's what they're going to be responsible for, whatever the town was slated to spend, the town will be responsible for. The difference is that with this additional amount, the one point eight 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 million dollars, the town is going to be responsible for that, uh, that amount. So.
So, so the town is going to be responsible for the entire increase?
For this entire increase, and so the, what that, what that breaks down to is, when you look at the big picture of this project, the WPCA in the end, with all, all costs and all non-grant costs, the WPCA would be responsible for sixty-two percent of the cost, and the town would be responsible for thirty-eight percent of the cost. And so that's what this resolution is doing, it's saying that the town, what the, uh, the amount that the town would be responsible for.
And why, and why is that right? Why are we doing that?
So, there was some discrepancy and some difference of opinion about where this, where this amount should be set. Um, originally, uh, you know, just to go back a little ways, originally, when the WPCA Commission voted, uh, on previous funding, funding to date, they assumed that it would be split fifty-fifty, uh, fifty percent town, fifty percent WPCA. And what the town boards did after that, subsequent to that, is, uh, put all that, all that cost, all the non-grant costs, with the exception of three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars to date on the WPCA. And so the split at that point was somewhere around, I believe it was nine percent town, ninety-one percent WPCA. Um, there, there were some people at the time, uh, some of the board members at the time, who thought it should have been fifty percent, fifty-fifty. Um, that, and I think it's also important to take into account that this is not just about the setting, uh, of rates, but the fact that this project is to protect assets within, um, within that, that property area. And within that area, we have the Regional Fire Training School, we have the, um, uh, Animal Control Center there, uh, and so, and so there are town assets that are benefiting from this as well. And so, to avoid any kind of, uh, rehashing of previous decisions by the boards, uh, we thought this was a fair, uh, a fair allocation of the cost overall, even though the town is picking up a hundred percent of this additional amount over the long haul, and given the, uh, the total amount of the project, we thought this was fair.
So the, so Jared, the, um, the incremental, at the end of the day, does that split that you said, I think you said sixty-two thirty-eight, is that the final split? Of the cost here?
That's the final split of all the non-grant costs, yes.
And how much, how much do they have left in their trust fund or in that, that fund that they had built up?
Uh, you're talking about the, the, the WPCA fund balance?
Yeah.
My understanding is that it's somewhere around eleven million dollars.
Right, and what's the, and how is that eleven million spoken for? And my apologies, I seem to have taken over this conversation, so Nancy, my apologies for that, I didn't mean to do that to you.
All good. You're on a roll, keep going.
I, I don't know that it's, uh, directly spoken for, but it's, I, I believe that the intent is to kind of anticipating that there would be some uh, large projects, in particular, an upgrade to the facility, and that, that accumulation of, of funding would help to pay for some of that. Um, I, Phil Nor, Phil Norton is on, um, I don't know if he has anything further to add about the, in terms of the WPCA uh, commissions, uh, rationale or viewpoint on that.
Yes, I, I think Jared is accurate, as, uh, Selectman Flynn was stating. We have some large capital projects, not only the treatment plant, these truck line, um, each, uh, um, trunk line, wetlands crossing, we have several large capital projects coming before us.
So is the intent to use the eleven million on which projects?
Uh, I think the eleven millions will be utilized on, uh, uh, several of them, not all at once, and not all inclusive, depending on what kind of federal and state funding is available for those projects.
And how much of that, how, how has that eleven million been built up through the years? Like, stair step, is it, are we going to add to that eleven million this year?
I don't believe so. I think we're looking at a break even. I think that, that fund balance includes everything including our operating budget. So there's, there's money that comes out for that, so, you know, we're almost to the end of the year now, so there won't be much more coming out for this operation. so there won't be much more coming out of this operating budget, but that number will increase when the, uh, the 22 budget hits.
Right. But, Bill, the reason, and thank you for being here, and thank you for answering my questions. The reason I'm following up on it is, again, going back kind of the history of this, and Jared got it pretty well right. The one, the one thing that was missing in the explanation, and, and one of the reasons the decision was made the way it was at the town side, was that we were unaware that the WPCA had kind of developed this fund, right? And had been, I don't want to say overcharging, that's not what I meant, but they unilaterally increased kind of the rate that they were charging and built up this fund. And as it relates to the, to the, um, replacement project, the really big project that we're talking about, um, that's, you know, a few years, we gotta start doing it now, uh, to go online in a few years, uh, the town actually hasn't made the determination of how we're gonna fund that, whether it's gonna be rate-based, taxpayer-based, or a combination of the two. Um, so we, on the boards, we were a little put off by the fact that there was this pot of money that was being, um, uh, developed over a period of time, um, and, and the town hadn't made its decision on how to fund that. Uh, I think Jared raises an excellent point here in that there are other assets outside of the WPCA assets, um, that are impacted by this project, whether it be the animal control or the, um, or the fire safety school. So, uh, because of that, I'm, I'm largely okay with this, but I do think there needs to be more coordination between the town funding bodies, uh, and the WPCA as to, A, the rates, and B, how we're gonna fund things going forward, because there seems to be a, a fair amount of miscommunication there from the past.
Could I just make one comment? It's John Staffstrom.
Yeah.
The, um, uh, you know, I've, Tom, I've been there with you through this whole allocation question and, and, and the entire issue. Um, and one of the reasons we're suggesting the MOU, which was in the original, uh, also in the original resolution, is to clarify this. Because part of the discussion with the WPCA is going to be not just what the town share is, but the remaining share that is the WPCAs, are they going to actually fund that out of their reserve fund? Or are they gonna ask the town to issue bonds for some of that and then agree to reimburse the town for the debt service? So we envision an MOU that would say, this is the town's share of the project. And by the way, if you're asking the town to issue bonds on your behalf for some of what is your share, you're gonna agree to pay the debt service, which of course would come out of the user fees.
Yeah, thank you, John. And I also think, and, and I'm glad you're here and point that out, I also think there was some commu- miscommunication or some assumptions made. I think the town bodies voted one way, and if, if Jared prepped me correctly, um, we spoke about this a number of weeks ago, I think the WPCA had a different understanding and never went back and really understood what the town bodies, uh, had intended on the original funding of this. Is that correct?
Uh, it appears that somebody missed the resolution that limited the town's, uh, uh, shall I say, liability to $385,000.
Right. So I'm sure that the WPCA is now looking at the, oh, by the way, you owe this amount towards this project, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, and John, thank you. That just proves my point about the miscommunication there and the, and the need for a better collaboration. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
And, and Tom, Tom, to one of the questions you had on the earlier, uh, resolution, which is somewhat relevant here, the other reason we've re- we've reduced the bond authorization, which as you know, we don't normally do, is because the grant money has already been received. So we thought it was prudent to actually limit the bonding amount, knowing that the grant money was already in hand.
That doesn't happen often.
No.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
I just wanna chime in, that's serving on the WPCA, and we're talking about miscommunication here. Perhaps we could think of a, a communication mechanism that would allow for these kinds of mis, you know, to, to rectify that for moving forward. So I, I don't.
Yeah. I think, I think that's right, Nancy. And, and this came up, it probably developed at the Board of Finance when we approved it, because as John will remember back, when we originally did this a number of years ago, that's where we had determined what the split would be, a relatively spirited conversation, as I recall. But we were caught a little bit off guard by the fact that there was that pot of money that had been set aside without the discussion having happened on the big, the big project that's, that's staring us in the face over the next number of years. And once we found out they had a pot of money and they had been doing that, we said, well, you should dip into that and help pay for this, as I recall.
Yeah, and, and perhaps, you know, I know they met with Mr. Bremer early on in, in the new administration, so perhaps, you know,
Yep.
there could be regular communication there.
Yeah. Do, Nancy, since you were on that board, do you have anything you wanna say on this or anything you wanna?
No, I'm, I'm listening to this. I see Bill Norton's here, and I don't know if I'm missing any of the, the context, because some of the... I, I mean, I don't, so.
Okay.
Jared, do you wanna share something?
Well, I just, I just wanna say to your point, uh, Nancy, we, uh, I did reach out to, uh, Bill Norton beforehand to talk about the percent, the allocation split, um, so that he had, he did have time to go back to his board chair and some of the board members to discuss it with them and see what their, what their feedback was, and they seemed to be okay with it, so.
Yeah. I just, I, I was really more addressing the future communication channels.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. So, so basically, we're looking at 2/3, 1/3 here. We're, we're splitting hairs a little bit. It's not quite, but it's pretty close.
That's right.
And the bonding resolution, Mr. Staffstrom, how long is this for? 20 years?
Uh, I believe so.
And it's a standard langu- standard language in our bonds?
The standard, sta- standard, standard language except for the whereas clauses, which go on for a long time.
Yeah.
Reciting, reciting history.
Yeah. Is there anything, is there anything concerning in this at all? I'm assuming not.
No, it's, it's the standard, it's the standard language.
Thank you, sir. I've got nothing else.
Nancy, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
I mean, obviously, this is a bit of a curveball. Um, you know, as you all know, I mean, we took over quite a few challenges, um, when I came in. There's a lot of things happening. Um, so, uh, there's another one. So, um, so, we have a motion, we have a second.
Welcome to another day.
Yeah, welcome to the day. Welcome to another day at Town Hall.
Fine.
All right. So we have a motion to approve and a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Our next item, which Nancy was nice enough to ask to waive the reading of the item, um, but is an important item, and it is Smith Richardson, uh, Clubhouse Building Committee. Um, and the committee, uh, we have the Chair, Craig Curly here, and we have Mr. Calabrese as well. And so, um, we are, uh, we welcome you to talk about your final sign-off on your, on your wonderful job, uh, delivering us a lovely facility. I'm getting nice emails over the weekend, uh, talking about people's enjoyment of the facility. So that's always nice to hear. And I will turn it over to you, Mr. Curly. Can you, or you, you need to unmute, Craig. I'm sorry.
All right. Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you, Brenda. Uh, appreciate you, um, uh, having me join you today. Um, and, and thank you, everybody. Um, uh, as I mentioned to Brenda, uh, late last week, at our previous, um, building committee meeting, uh, one of the topics that the committee members discussed was whether we were in a position to disband the building committee, um, in understanding that our recommendation would come to this board and ultimately the board would decide whether it was time or not. But, um, the, the building and, and project is virtually complete. It's not 100% complete, but all of the major decisions that are required of this committee are, have been made. Um, there are some outstanding invoices, and there are some, uh, small ticket items that still need to be delivered, um, and installed, but those items, um, have in fact, decisions regarding those items have in fact been made and, and orders placed. Um, so we will, as customary for the, uh, for, uh, building committees, we will keep the executive committee together, uh, and available to approve any final, um, uh, invoices to be paid or, or, or denied. Uh, and, and otherwise, uh, the services of the committee, um, are virtually to me, uh, complete. So I wanted to make myself available, uh, to you today to answer any questions that you might have. As a general summary, I, I believe we did provide a budget summary, um, for this meeting. I believe it's in your packet. And, uh, our original budget was 7.02 million. Um, and it, it looks like we're gonna come in about $140,000 to $150,000 under budget. So our goal was to, uh, be in a position to start construction and use 2020 as our year of construction, uh, and, and, uh, do it in a manner that would allow the golf course operations to stay open. Uh, and I'm really glad to say that we were able to do that with, with little to no interruption to the, um, golf operations. Certainly, going out, going without a clubhouse in 2020 was a challenge to the, uh, uh, people who did come and play. Uh, but in a year of COVID, uh, two things happened. Uh, we had a lot more traffic than we ever anticipated. Um, uh, and managing construction delays was a bit of a challenge, but at, at the end of the day, we got the project complete in time for the start of the 2021 season. And as Brenda pointed out, um, uh, we were, we're getting lots of very positive feedback on the ultimate, uh, end product. And as a committee, I can say, and as the chairmans, uh, specifically, uh, there are always some decisions that you might second guess or, or think about, uh, what we might have been able to do differently. But in the end, big picture, uh, we're all thrilled with what we were able to accomplish and, and deliver for the town. I think it's really a beautiful facility that, uh, the town will be able to enjoy for decades. So I'll pause there and, and see if there are any questions.
Um, I did have, first of all, uh, thank you for all the work, Craig, to you and the committee. I, I've said that to you, and I said that at, up at the dedication to yourself and members of your committee. So appreciate all the hard work. Uh, I've been up there a couple of times. It, it truly is such an upgrade over what it was. So, uh, well done to all of you, uh, and to the, uh, town employees who helped, uh, manage this process as well and operated the golf course through the difficult time. It's, it's truly a good investment and a, and a strong asset for the town. Um, I have heard rumblings that there was an issue with the floor up there, and while I don't want to go into kind of, uh, details about it, it's, um, what I would like to know is, do we think that there's gonna be any additional costs that, that might be spent before this budget is, is locked out?
Yeah, great question, Tom, and thank you. That's definitely something that I had mentioned in my email to, to Brenda late last week. Uh, there wasn't, there was and is an, uh, issue with the flooring. Uh, the bulk of the floor, um, there, there were three different flooring, uh, materials that were used. It was, uh, sealed concrete for the kitchen area, that's fine. The carpeted areas around the pro shop and the, and the, the golf wing of the facility, that's fine. Um, but the main section of the building has a vinyl floor. That was, uh, the manufacturer's recommendation and the, um, guidance from the design, uh, specs, as provided by our architect, called for either a membrane, um, to be used, uh, over the poured concrete slab before the floor went down, or to have the floor, um, secured and glued in place. Neither of those things happened. Um, and as a result, uh, the, the flooring itself, if you catch it in the right light, you will see that it's, uh, got a bit of a wave to it. It's, it's not, uh, to the point where it's a safety hazard at this stage, but certainly, when we paid the type of money that we, we, the town, paid the type of money that we did for this floor, you don't want it to have, uh, a problem, even if it's cosmetic at this point. So we had alerted to, or the building committee reached out to Anthony Calabrese, um, uh, when this issue first arose. We mentioned that, uh, we recommended that he engage the town attorney, to the extent that there were legal, um, issues or ramifications of this. Um, there was some investigation work that went on, and I believe that the current state is for, uh, the floor to be replaced, uh, but whether that occurs right now in the middle of the golf season, where it's also gonna disrupt the revenue of the, the, uh, restaurant, or whether it waits until January, um, that's to be determined. Um, as a one-person survey, I think, uh, because it's not a safety issue, it's likely in the best interest of both the concessionaire and the town to wait, um, and not disrupt the current operations. But, um, you know, and it, and as mentioned, it's not, it's not a safety hazard right now, so, um.
Craig, I under, yeah, no, thank you for that. I understand that. I don't mean to cut you off. I completely agree. I wonder what the vendor's gonna say. And, and two things, A, do we know who's on the hook for the cost yet? And B, um, to the, i- if the town attorney's on, does he have anything he'd like to add to this briefly?
Yeah, and I, I'll happily turn it over to the town attorney for his, uh, insight as well, but I think it's pretty clear that the town has no, uh, financial, uh, risk here. Uh, the building committee did withhold, uh, one of the final, uh, payment applications for, to the contractor. Um, so we have some financial leverage as well. Um, how that specifically is gonna be handled, I, I think it's appropriate to, to leverage the town attorney and, and the right people down at Town Hall. Um, but at the end of the day, this is not a financial obligation that town has to worry about.
Mr. Baldwin, you concur with that?
Yes, I do. I, I concur 100%, uh, but I don't think that it's appropriate to say much more at this point, since we are still, uh, in the early stages of making those arrangements. But, uh, Mr. Curly is correct.
Great. That's what I thought. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it, and well done. Oh, by the way, one last thing. Given this outstanding item and given the withholding of payment and giving this is gonna be a, a follow-up item, from a legal perspective, Mr. Baldwin, is it prudent to disband this committee at this time? Or does that have any impact at all on the, on legal matters going forward?
Yeah, I, I don't think it has any impact on the legal aspects of this immediate situation. And as Mr. Curly pointed out, uh, it's now being handled not by the building committee, but rather by, uh, my office in conjunction with Anthony Percising and any others that may be necessary. Certainly, um, the executive committee, which is gonna continue, will have its input and will participate as necessary. But we don't think that the, the full building committee, uh, needs to continue for this, uh, the single reason.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So, so one, one last thing I'd like to say, uh, if, if I might, uh, well, I guess two things. One, um, I wanted to thank the, the board specifically for, uh, entrusting our committee with this project. Brenda, I know you weren't in this position, uh, at the start of the project, but, uh, certainly you've been here, uh, through the end of it, and appreciate your support there from you and your administration. Tom, you were a big part of the, uh, approval process while you were on the Board of Finance, and, and you provided some pretty clear guidance to the committee as to what roadmap we should follow in order to give the town bodies comfort, uh, that we could do this successfully. Um, so I appreciate that guidance and wanted to thank you for that. Nancy, while you were on the RTM, you al- also, uh, had a lot of inquiries and asked a lot of questions that kept us on point, uh, as well. So that, that helped steer some of the decisions that we made. Uh, and of course, uh, Ed Bateson, who, um, resigned, uh, was on the Board of Selectmen at the time as well, and he was instrumental, instrumental in helping us at that early stage as well. So I just want to, on behalf of the committee, extend those thank yous, uh, to all of you. Um, and then one last thing I'll share as well, as an aside to what was discussed earlier, uh, if you might recall, the old kart barn was only large enough for 60 golf carts, hence the 60 that are on, in fleet. Um, but as Anthony pointed out, uh, to, to host a, an outing where you have the full field, you need 80. And that's, that's, uh, that's why the committee expanded that, uh, golf, the golf, uh, cart, uh, barn that we have, the kart barn, uh, to accommodate that additional 20, with the idea that there was an expectation of attracting these outings, uh, through the last number of years, the, the town, the course would have one or two, maybe three events. And I was thrilled to hear, uh, Anthony state earlier that there were 15 events on the calendar. So, um, for those events in the past, the course would actually rent golf carts on a daily basis for those events. Uh, and if they were going to rent those carts on a daily basis for the number of events that they were anticipating, that would have been a much larger expense. So I, I, I think it was a very wise move to go out and secure those additional 20 carts now that we have the room to store them. So just wanted to share that.
Nancy, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna say to you, Craig, and your committee, congratulations. You, you did yeoman's work. And I think, um, on the RTM, I remember some of the most lively And I think on the RTM, I remember some of the most lively and lengthy conversations we had were around the approval of this money. No one was spending it lightly. And now that it's in the rearview mirror somewhat, mostly, I think that most people would say they are sure glad that we did. And just really, congratulations, well done. And I think it is a really truly wonderful asset for our town.
Thank you.
But don't think your work is done here. We still need you in town, so.
Fair enough. I've been volunteering in one capacity or another for 15 to 20 years, so happy to continue.
Well, it ain't over yet, so thank you for for all you've done to you and the committee.
Thank you. Thank you.
So thank you for your comments. And and I do want to, again, extend my sincere appreciation. I know I responded to the email, but I do want to sincerely appreciate, share my appreciation to the entire committee, really, for all your hard work. People forget, you know, how many hours it takes to volunteer and put all this effort in. And it's, you know, so many times a thankless job, and it's certainly not a paying job, you know. And it's really much appreciated because our community benefits so much and so greatly by our volunteers. And so kudos to all of you and thank you so much.
Thank you, Brenda.
And so I do need a motion actually from the board to officially.
So moved to disband the committee.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, Craig.
Thank you again.
Craig, I think that means you're fired.
Thanks, Tom. I appreciate it.
How are you doing?
All right, thank you. All right, our next item is item number 13. This is to hear and consider and act upon the following resolution in support of quote home rule and local control unquote in municipal zoning decision making. And I know there was an attachment that the board received in their backup. So I'm gonna, well, I'm gonna first ask for a motion to approve and then a second, and then we'll create, we'll start discussing.
I'll make the motion.
So moved. I'll second it.
Thank you. So I'm gonna open it up for discussion. The board.
So for, this was a motion that I'm firmly in favor of. I don't think the town fully appreciates how important our town planning and zoning committee is for two reasons. Number one, preserving the character of our neighborhoods and the individual areas of town. Protecting property values through their work. And number two, the fact that planning and zoning and the use of our real estate is the economic engine that that drives opportunity for the town. Whether that be the mix of commercial and residential, whether it be the density, whether it be the living conditions of the town and really preserves the Fairfield that people know and love. They have a difficult job on our local town planning and zoning. They can't do everything that they want to do. We've been very lucky with that body to have some very, very good people and some strong leadership. And quite frankly, I'd like to see more home rule and more local control over our planning and zoning as opposed to less. And I think this state has overreached a bit on this. They have valid concerns and valid questions. And affordable housing is important to everybody. This is not about affordable housing, truthfully. This is about controlling our number one asset, which is our real estate on town. And I would like to support our state delegation. I'd like to support our town planning and zoning board. And I would like to make sure that we control our own destiny as it relates to the assets of the town. I think that Fairfielders know the best way to utilize our precious town resources and preserve the character of our neighborhoods. And I'd like to see us control that. So thank you.
Um, I just, I'll follow up with that. When I read this on Friday, and while this is a resolution brought forth by the Board of Selectmen, I, sorry, Brenda, did I interrupt you? You're on.
I'm sorry, I was talking to Jackie.
Oh, oh, sorry, okay.
I muted myself.
Hi, Jackie. I just, I hadn't seen the language until Friday, so I just want to make sure people understand that this isn't, you know, Tom, I, there is language in this resolution that I agree with. I think we, many of us would agree that the state, the state statutes need changing. We need to look at our, our laws. I disagree, and ultimately, I think, you know, for me, I don't support this resolution. Because I would argue that this isn't about not being able to control our destiny. I think that what's happening at the state, we are already actors of the state. We function in that way. There are state guidelines and it's a framework. It's an old framework. It needs looking at. I think it's the legitimate process that helps us determine what viable replacements are for some of these laws. And I would also argue that what's happening at the state, and and maybe this is again where the difference in philosophy or opinion it comes down to it. I think, I don't see it as taking away the zoning laws that are being proposed. I would argue that they're not stripping our town the ability to have control. The proposals are still in the stage of, they're still working them out. And this is the first time we've collectively been able to talk about this. I've listened to the forums. And while I didn't know this specific resolution would come forth, I had heard rumblings of it and I've been trying to watch it at the state. And I think unfortunately, what's happened, it's become very partisan. And we're not really talking about the nuance here. And I, present company aside, because this is the first time we've talked about it. And we haven't, so. But I see that, you know, we in Fairfield, to me, community doesn't stop at the borders. There is an interconnectedness to the nature of how we look at some of these zoning laws. And and in the language, there's wording about unintentional consequences. And for me, what remains is, you know, now that I've had a chance over these last 10 months to look at equity and inclusion and climate and sustainability. And I, and I don't know the implication yet because we haven't really stretched what this resolution is, what those implications would be. So ultimately, I think probably I will be in the minority position here. But for me, the challenge, as I said, is perhaps it's just one of philosophy where because we are already actors of the state and having to work in that framework. I don't see this as stripping, stripping the municipalities' rights. And one of the words, Tom, you talked about character. And I know that some of the language that they're talking about at the state is just to look at, to the use of that word. So I probably have more to say here. I just don't want to be in a monologue.
So, um, thank you, Nancy. And so listen, I, you know, I get, you know, both sides of this. Obviously, you know, I, you know, you both know I've had a tremendous amount of experience in this area. Served, you know, in the legislature, I was on the housing committee for the whole term. Served as the ranking member on that housing committee. Listen, we did that forum, the, I don't know if you, either one of you had a chance to listen to it, townwide forum.
Yep, I did.
And, you know, I do, I do agree with this. And I value your opinion, Nancy, you know, and I understand where you're coming from. I just feel like there's just so much, it's not just housing. It's just the mandates that come out of the state all the time and this one size fits all approach to our, to our state and things that come down toward our towns. I mean, like I said at the forum, the eight dash 30 G statute is so incredibly flawed. And and no one, no one was interested in touching even a comma or period in that thing for a very long time. And and really thousands of hours, thousands literally of hours of of meetings that I sat through to try to get modifications and and very small, like miniscule. And those sunset. So, you know, like Matt Wagner brought up during the meeting. You know, people, when this, when this, when eight dash 30 G was passed 30 years ago, did not understand the consequences of it into the future, right? And it's like Matt Wagner says, and I know things seem benign, right? You know, the word character, you know, yes, we can all agree on certain things, right? But there does seem to be, and like I said during this meeting, the town hall meeting, that we're, we're, I, like I said to everyone, why are we even passing a single zoning law in the state legislature? Right now, why, why are we even passing anything? Towns are submitting affordable housing plans to the state. We have done yeoman's work on this issue, so much work. We're not even being given, not just the town of Fairfield, but towns across mostly Fairfield County is where this is having the biggest impact. No one has even been giving us a chance to meet the goals that have already been laid out. And there's more now being piled up. So my, my position is, you know, take a deep breath, stop passing things and let us work on what we already have before us. Before we start adding more on to the whole pile. Because frankly, our town just can't keep up. You know what's going on. You see the predatory development. I mean, eight dash 30 G has become a gift to predatory developers, bottom line. Jim Wentz, Jim Wentz said it very clearly during the town hall meeting. Over 900 market rate units. And out of that 900 units, which skirt around every single zoning law we have in this town, we got 90 affordable units. That's really, you know, a drop in the bucket in making any measurable difference in, in, in expanding affordable housing in the town of Fairfield. So, you know, these are the kinds of things that I just have said for years. You know, if we really care about affordable housing, and believe me, I do, not many legislators sign up to be on the housing committee for their entire tenure. But I did willfully because I actually cared about the issue. Because I worked on it in Congressman Shay's office when I worked for him for seven years. So I think you're right, Nancy, it has become a bit of a sort of a partisan issue, which I don't think it should at all. It shouldn't. It should be more about what are we really trying to do? And why aren't, why aren't towns being at least given the, the opportunity to meet the current things? You know, submitting our affordable housing plans, working with the state, you know, these types of things that we can actually grow and build our own affordable housing without predatory development. So, you know, I, listen, do I think that at the end of the day, these resolutions other towns are passing and the one that we have now before us now are going to make a huge difference to the powers that be in the legislature? No. But I think it's important message to say that we should have some control over our own destiny. And we should at least be, not just ourselves, but this is a resolution for the town of Fairfield. We should at least be given the chance to submit our housing plans and to comply with what we've already been asked before we're being asked to jump through some additional hoops with any type of legislation concerning zone. So that's kind of where I'm coming from on this.
I think that's well said, Madam First Selectwoman.
And, you know, yeah, and I would just say back that I, I agree with you. I just don't agree in the symbolic, you said message, but in the symbolic message that it sends. And again, here we agree to disagree.
Yep.
And ultimately, I mean, my understanding, and again, it's such a nuanced, complicated issue. And I think most people in town really actually don't even understand. And so they hear the various soundbites and it gets very confusing. So I think, I would just say eight 30 G, my understanding that we can't even touch it for another year based on law that was passed a few years ago.
No, no, it's sunsetting this year, actually. The, the majority put a five year sunset on it to even pass it. They wouldn't have allowed the changes without the sunset. But that doesn't preclude, I mean, listen, having a conversation thing, but yeah, it doesn't preclude changes to it.
And, and again, you know, for me, I go back to this idea that at the state, what's happening is or should be happening in an ideal world, that this is the legitimate process whereby we determine what are good replacements. So, you know, that, that for me is of paramount importance that we have that process. And, you know, and and again, present company excluded, but people like to talk about Hartford. And and it's like this big, not personal entity. And we have to remember that Hartford is made up of people, as you well know, who we elected because we've chosen that, because they represent our point of view. And that's what we have as citizens. So, you know, I just encourage everybody to remember that it's not big bag Hartford. It's actually individual legislators making decisions and determinations. So, and hopefully, people are making determinations based on how we, we all, you know, the majority of us feel. So I, you know, again, we agree to disagree on this one.
Yeah, and just as a, as a follow up to that, because I appreciate it. I don't think anybody's saying short circuit your process up in Hartford. I think it's expressing the fact that in, at least in our town and in many towns, home rule has to be considered a bit more. And to the First Selectwoman's point, they passed eight 30 G and the unintended consequences of that have still not completely played out yet. To add yet another layer to that without addressing the unintended consequences that have already taken place and continue to take place is folly, in, in my opinion. And I don't think we need more laws. I think we need to revise the ones we have, see if they're hitting the goals. And everybody has the goal of affordable housing while maintaining the character, while maintaining property value and allowing towns to control their economic engine, which is their real estate. And that's all I think that this is saying, whether it has an impact or not, I don't know. But I think it's important that we at least go on the record. That, that we believe that there should be more say by the towns in controlling this asset. I, I trust Fairfielders to do the right thing.
And, ooh, I have to, yeah, I have to follow up on that because I am not saying I don't trust Fairfielders at all. I'm saying, I don't, no, no, I just want to also say for the record that I think, you know, again, my ultimate sentiment is that I don't believe that that's what's happening, that we are being stripped away of our, our rights or our ability to have a say. And.
That's fair.
That's it. And, and that's, you know.
And by the way, Nancy, let me go, I wasn't trying to imply that you felt that way, so.
And by the way, too, I think that there are going to be lots of people who agree and support your perspective. And there will be those that support mine, and I'm here just to be that voice for, for those people. So. That's it.
Fair enough. Is there any further comment?
None for me.
All right. Well, I think I've spoken about this thing for 10 years. Not going to share any more of my feelings that everybody should know in town. All right, so we have a motion on the table of, we, I did make, did I ask for a motion? I did.
We do, it's on.
Okay. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye. Or nay, I don't know. I am opposed. I don't know if I'm supposed to say that in the affirmative.
Nay, I think.
Nay, okay.
Nay. Okay, it passes, it passes two to one. All right, our next item is item 14, to consider and act upon the tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of 33,12262. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, so I have a few things. An update, so I just want to share, I did share in my newsletter, but for those who didn't read it or for the public and or for you, all of you. As more, obviously, as more of our residents are getting vaccinated, I'm very encouraged that we have officially moved out of the red and orange categories, which has plagued us for a year, into the lovely yellow category, which is perfect, which is much better. This is the third week in a row Fairfield has experienced a reduction in our case rate, allowing us to begin returning to normal life. As you can see, all of us can see, starting to happen. The town has had 5,215 cases to date and 205 of our residents have sadly lost their lives to COVID. Last Monday, as you know, the FDA approved children from 12 to 18 to get vaccinated. We had a clinic that was just, they, our health department, once again, I was down there this morning, they knocked it out of the park last week. They stayed two full nights, the clinic filled up so much, they stayed two full nights to nearly nine o'clock at night doing vaccines for our, for, for that age group. And I really appreciate, we should all be so appreciative of how much work they've done. As of last Friday, our health department has administered more than 23,000 vaccinations into the arms of Connecticut residents, which included about 1,000 12 to 15 year olds. Per Governor Lamont's executive order, May 19th, all business restrictions will end. Outdoor masks will no longer be required for both unvaccinated and vaccinated individuals. Outdoor masks will no longer be required for both unvaccinated and vaccinated individuals. Uh, indoor masking is not required for vaccinated individuals, but it is required for those who are not vaccinated, per the new CDC guidelines. Uh, private businesses have the authority to determine their own masking policies. It's gonna be a bit confusing over the next few weeks, right? We've got things coming in and out. Um, I do want to uh, mention, we have had, um, you know, parents uh, reaching out, and I get it, uh, to us, saying, hey, you know, these are changing, you know, uh, why can't our students not have to wear a mask? Um, during, you know, they, they changed it, they don't have to use it during sports now. But they're asking, why do our children have to, they didn't clarify, why do children have to do it, wear a mask at recess? Valid question. I get it, makes no sense, right? If you can play sports without a mask, why can't you be on the playground at recess without the mask? Um, then there's a few other little ques- there's not few little, but there's few other questions from families, you know, and I get it. So uh, Sands is uh, has reached out to the State Department of Public Health and the Department of Education. He's gonna be on a call with them, I believe tomorrow, to try to get some clarification here. Cause we'd like to be more clear uh, with, we don't wanna go against any guidelines, even if they don't seem to make sense. Um, we still don't wanna be violating any rules. So he's going to get some clarity on these things and we're gonna be uh, getting that information and he will work directly with uh, Mike Cummings and hopefully we can send out some clarifying information for families. Um, on the masking policy. I do wanna say that, that a number of businesses reach out to us and say, hey Brenda, what do we do, what do we do? And I say this to them, and this is in conjunction what we're doing at Independence Hall. We are opening our doors on Wednesday, May nineteenth. Now, we've had our doors opened the whole time, but it's been a by appointment or drop or so on and so forth. Doors are open on the nineteenth. Now, we're not, we're, our, our departments, you know, if some people feel comfortable still wearing a mask and employees, they do. For the time being, we are gonna require masks for the public when they come into our buildings. Cause we don't feel comfortable, nor should we, asking our employees if they're vaccinated or not. So that's how we're gonna manage it here. And I know businesses are feeling a little confused right now cause they don't know what to do. And what we have said to businesses is that you do what you feel comfortable doing. It's your business. So if you want to have the masks sign up and you want people who come into your, your facility or your business, and you want them to wear a mask, that's, that's your business. You have a right to do that. So I just wanted to bring that up. Um, so I, and I'm excited about for, full person um, reopening of our operations at town hall. It'll be a nice change. And so I, as you may have read in the um, I announced that we were gonna be having a Memorial Day parade. I mentioned it to both of you at our last meeting. And our fireworks, so that's exciting. And um, the mask, the, just that mask piece I wanted to share. So one other thing I do wanna just um, share with uh, the board and the public as well is, you know, I've received some emails and calls regarding the incidents, the racist, racial incidents that happened in our schools. Um, and, and as a, as First Selectwoman of Fairfield and as a mom, and just as a plain old human being, um, it always saddens me, uh, just breaks my heart to hear when we have any incident in town, especially in our schools. Um, I of course stand in complete opposition and condemn racism in all forms. I don't think I should have to say that. But um, I have said it, I said repeatedly over this past year, but obviously I do. Um, it's been, um, this has been a, a, a difficult journey for the racial and equity justice task force. Um, dealing with these issues over the last year. And I wanna thank you Nancy for your continued efforts as co-chair of that task force. And the heinous attack on your meeting, and now this incident that took place in our public schools. Um, it's, 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 it, it's heartbreaking. Um, and these incidents are just sad reminders of the need for this task force. But also for all of us to use this practice in our average, everyday lives. I've been talking about this. Teaching tolerance, not just in conversations by our actions as well, as a community and instill this in our own children for the next generation. You know, I'm, I'm proud of the swift action our police department took, um, who charged the student and, and this, and Superintendent Cummings, um, and the principals for holding them accountable uh, in, in conjunction with board policy. Which by the way is confidential. I know people have been asking for information to the school district. And you know, these are minors, um, and disciplinary action is protected under state statute, state law. So while I don't oversee the public schools, I know the Superintendent Cummings and the principals are, are taking all the necessary steps to move our community forward. And I trust that our Board of Education is gonna provide um, guidance and talk about these items. And I hope they'll be talking to the task force as well. I know they've had dialogue with your task force Nancy, but hope they will continue because this, this latest incident is certainly a teachable moment for our educators, parents and our entire community. So I'm, like I've said repeatedly uh, throughout this past year, I'm, I'm always here to listen to people. I, I prefer to have conversations uh, over the phone. Um, I'm, I'm not much for arguing over social media, which I think is unproductive. And I just, I, you know, I want what every one of you, right? I want what every one of you want. I want Fairfield to be a place where people feel safe, all backgrounds, all races, all colors, all cultures. And we each take a part in that, every single one of us. We each take a responsibility. So I just wanted to um, I just wanted to share that and then I wanted to open it up to the, to the board. Sure Nancy, go right ahead.
Um, thank you for that. And I wanna talk about that exact issue of everyone feeling safe here. Um, it made international news that there is a student in our school system that doesn't feel safe going to school. And I, I have to be frank, ten months ago, that would have shocked me. But I have spent the last ten months listening and learning and hearing first accounts of the lived experience of, of people from, um, you know, young and old, black, brown. Um, and I would say that until every student here, until every person here feels safe in occupying the body in which they exist, we have a responsibility. And that's really uncomfortable, we've learned from some people in this community. You know, I am not saying, when I say that, I am not saying it is the individual, it's each of us as individual. I'm not calling anybody a racist. But I'm saying that when even one student does not feel safe, we have an, a responsibility, not for the individual acts of racism that are perpetuated um, on our students or, or on our citizens here, but we have a responsibility to lead in a way that shows we are standing as allies and we're responsible for, to respond to the ensuing trauma that, that happens in the wake of, of these attacks and in the aftermath of these attacks. And, you know, the eyes of the world are on us. Um, I don't know if you know what I'm referring to, but, but we did make um, international news. Um, there was a piece in the Daily Mail talking about this and celebrities are tweeting about it. So, so people are watching. And I think um, as leaders, as elected leaders, as community members, we have a responsibility to decide, one, how we're gonna respond and, and who we wanna be moving forward. And um, and now it is with renewed purpose through every, you know, you, you're hearing me talk about it a lot, whether it's the sustainability plan or the strategic plan or the affordable housing plan, you know, how is it and what is it that we're really talking about? How is this impacting equity inclusion? Um, through a lens of racial equity and justice. And um, it's, 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 as I said, for me, ten months ago, I, I wouldn't have known to ask some of the questions that I am now asking. And um, you know, it's my hope that this is something we invest in long-term, in a permanent way, because people really are looking to us. Uh, to, to be able to, to respond in ways that feel appropriate. So, um, thank you for bringing it up. Um, it's been, it's been really, um, it's been a lot of things. Uh, and, and eye-opening. And I, and I just hope that people can hear this and receive this message and not get defensive, but rather open their minds and their hearts to understand that we each can take responsibility for making it better, for making it safer, for making it more inclusive. So um, thank you for that privilege and um,
Thank you Nancy. I know, I know you, I know you guys been working hard um, and trying and listen, um, this whole issue, uh, bullying, racism, a- a- all of this stuff, right? This is not something we want our community to be known for. I wasn't aware it was on, I don't, wasn't an international story. Um, I mean, I'm, I'm just upset that it happened. I don't care if it was an international story or not. Um, and you know, I, I, I'm, I'm glad that the superintendent and the school district took action and that the, the principals working with the families, um, because that's important. That's part of this, right? And so we're, I think, again, this is a teachable moment for all of us, for all of us. We have to constantly be living lives by example. You know, making statements, I, I'm, you know, listen, I get statements and, statements are fine, you know, but action really, um, action and living a life, um, I think is an important thing as well.
Can I add to that? So, so I just wanna echo, if I could jump on to something that you just said, um, because there, there's a lot of very strong opinion about the right way to handle specifically what happened at the school and this being a teachable moment. I mean, I think there's an opportunity because the victim or the victims, you know, it, there's a, a large web. And, and that's real trauma. And we have to address that and focus on that and, and help in that space and help those families heal. And um, and we also have to understand that there is a perpetrator who re- really needs education and they, there needs to be, um, I, I'm blanking on the word, but some sort of uh, red, uh, punishment. And it has to happen. But, but I think people um, need to, to take into account that um, it's not that simple. It's very complex. And just to say, this needs to happen, you know, it, expulsion, or I don't know what the right answer is, but, but that, that may be a Band-Aid. We have bigger issues that we need to, to talk about because I would say that there's still a lot of people who argue, oh, it doesn't even exist in this town. And I, I hope this opens people's eyes to understand that um, that that's not the case. So, anyway.
Well, I just wanna say that I know that the principals are working with the families. And um, as I said earlier, uh, I spoke to Mike Cummings and, you know, this is, um, they are juveniles. And whatever disciplinary action is protected under state law. Um, and then Superintendent has said in his messaging, um, you know, they're, the schools are obviously um, in charge of this issue. As far as all of this goes, working with the families and the disciplinary uh, piece. It's not something they can share what the disciplinary action is, um, by, by law. So I just wanted to share that cause I know that there has been some people saying we need to know what exactly, and that's not something the superintendent or the school district can do.
So I, I think um, you, I think uh, my colleagues have covered this issue very well. And I agree with much of what's being said. It's, it's an extraordinarily unfortunate event uh, perpetrated by juvenile who um, will bear whatever consequences are, are meted out for this. We need to allow due process to go forward, both due process in the punishment as well as due process uh, in the healing. Uh, I am proud, or, or I think we should be proud of the work that um, has been done to date. I think the principal jumped on this right away. I think the superintendent did as well. Uh, and the Board of Education, as well as the town's police department. And I would encourage everybody to allow the process uh, to play out in that regard. And I, I like uh, what both my colleagues said about this being a teachable moment. And I think Brenda, you, you specifically said uh, that this comes down to your own actions, the way you live your daily lives, uh, we as leaders of the town, as well as parents, uh, the way we comport ourselves, uh, the way we conduct ourselves publicly and privately, uh, bears a large, uh, for all of us, a large weight on, on how others will and what type of community we wanna uh, live in and, and have. Uh, I also agree, we don't want anybody um, fearful on a day-to-day basis or even feeling badly on a day-to-day basis about whatever it may be. Uh, about their, their physical appearance, their ethnicity, their religion, their sexual orientation. Uh, should not come into the equation. I was brought up, uh, it's, it, none of that matters. It's whether you're a good person or not. And I think we probably, all three of us were brought up that way. And I think that's just the, the modus operandi we should, under which we should all treat ourselves. So, um, that's really all I'd like to say on this issue. And, and I'm sure the school district's gonna handle it appropriately. Uh, and, and my heart goes out to uh, people involved in this incident. It's, it's unfortunate. So.
Well, thank you. Um, and so, uh, I'm gonna open it up because we have two, uh, we have two uh, re- residents who uh, asked to speak to our meeting. And so the first one is from Amy Ger- Ger- Gerario, who I've actually been playing telephone chat with. Um, and uh, Amy, are you on the line?
I am. Thank you Brenda.
Sure. Can you, you wanna go ahead and provide your public comment?
Yes, please. Uh, well, thank you for this opportunity and thank you to, uh, to all three of you on the Board of Selectmen for addressing um, the horrific incidences that happened lately. Um, and uh, you know, I just wanted to just give you some background. Uh, my husband and I moved here from Stanford nearly twenty years ago, uh, summer of two thousand one. And we moved from Stanford. And um, you know, sadly I have to say that uh, shortly after we got here, I thought we made a huge mistake. Because I could go days without seeing another person of color. Um, and nearly twenty years later, since moving here, our town's ethnic diversity has only increased very marginally. Uh, but, but you know, it's increased, so, so that's a good thing. Let's, you know, stay positive um, in that way. But you know, twenty years later, I'm, I'm, I'm horrified. Um, as a, as a Filipino-American, I was horrified to see a sixty-five-year-old Filipino-American get attacked through Times Square, kicked in the head. Um, where she literally had the door closed on her. Um, and uh, and, and now also, uh, the recent incidences in our own town. Um, you know, at the high school, targeting two black youth brothers as well as the horrific incidents uh, of the Zoom bombing only a short while ago, nearly a month ago. So, you know, I just echo what has already been said that, um, if there's any doubt that we needed the racial equity and justice task force, um, uh, these re- these recent incidences only underscore the need for this task force. And I so appreciate it being um, in existence. But I wanna, I wanted to come before you and say that that it is even more importantly, it's more important that this task force uh, become a task force that addresses diversity, equity and inclusion at all town levels. Um, and that it needs to be permanent, not just temporary. Um, and address all different um, issues from personnel to school district improvement plans. And um, I understand that, that uh, that there is a, a district improvement plan um, being, uh, being presented. So I'm, I'm hoping that uh, the task force will be involved in that and ensuring that uh, that student groups and all groups that are traditionally underrepresented have stakeholders that are involved. Um, and I just, you know, wanna share too that, for, for those of you who don't know, at the beginning of April, I spearheaded um, the organization of a peaceful gathering on the ta- on the Fairfield Town Hall Green. And the aim of that peaceful gathering was to come together to stand against the rise of racism and discrimination against the Asian Pacific American, American community. And Brenda, I really appreciate you being there and other elected officials um, of our town. It was important for the youth to see you there. Um, I was so proud of our youth speakers, five of them, for sharing their stories of pain and visibility and of feeling othered. Now, all five of these youth, they grew up in Fairfield. They grew up through the Fairfield Public School Systems. And they all had experiences and stories of, of being thought of. And they all had experiences and stories of, of being thought of as not American, that Asian Pacific American youth. Um, so this, these included their school experiences. Um, and they're, they're growing up here in Fairfield. So again, the task force is so important to hear these stories. It's important for everyone to hear these stories. I was humbled to be, um, to be invited to a virtual, um, APA, you know, another Stop Asian Hate virtual, um, rally. Uh, Tony Wong was invited to speak. Actually, we had Senator, um, Murphy there as well. Um, because the rally ended up, um, taking place at the heels of the national legislation that, uh, addressed the rising in, um, discrimination and hate against Asian Pacific Americans. Um, and again, there were youth that told story after story, um, and, uh, and, and it's these, it's trying to cap, I would love to capture these stories and actually, um, I'm in the, in the middle of trying to, um, figure out a way for more people to hear these stories. And, uh, there were teachers also, um, on, on this, in this virtual rally and they talked about the, the importance of agency and the importance of teaching history of marginalized people. Not about, not only about their, their, um, their, their horrible and shameful uh, history of victimization, but the importance of agency and the contributions of marginalized people, ethnic, racial, um, uh, religious, cultural, uh, you know, all the, the people that make up the fabric of our wonderful country of the United States of America. So, um, so again, I just cannot underscore enough the importance of this task force. Um, and, um, Brenda, thank you for being part of creating it. And Nancy, thank you so much for your, your co-leadership um, on this task force. So, so I, you know, again, so Brenda, I think, um, I'd love to continue having, um, you know, I would love to have dialogue with you. I, you know, I, we did play a phone, phone tag, but I really would like to work with you um, to figure out ways that we can really make transformative change in Fairfield. Um, and to be part of, um, and, and also get you to meet some of the youth too. And, and hopefully we can, um, come together.
Well, thank, thank you Amy. And, you know, I, I was very moved by spending time with the students that day at the rally and listening to their, um, their words. They're very, uh, raw and personal words. And I think it, I think you're right, that all our citizens should be hearing those words, uh, from our young people who don't feel comfortable um, in our, in our town, because that's just, um, it's completely unacceptable that anybody in our town should feel uncomfortable or like they don't.
I appreciate you saying that. So, so stay tuned and, uh, and, um, we'll bring, we'll figure out ways, creative ways to bring those stories to you and, uh, to, to everyone in Fairfield.
Thank you Amy. And we appreciate your comments.
Thank you Amy.
We also have Rennie, um, on the line, Rennie Noor, who wanted to make some public comments. Rennie, are you, are you there?
Yes, good afternoon. Um, this is Reine Noor, 83 Alberta Street in Fairfield. Um, thank you for your service to our town and for giving me the opportunity to speak on the agenda item to hear an update on any other town matters. I would like to emphasize that I'm speaking as a private resident of Fairfield and not in my capacity as volunteer for any of the many town organizations I'm a part of. Although, before I begin, I can't resist to invite you all to register for Fairfield Cares webinar with Dr. Matt Bellis this Wednesday. And go to FairfieldCares2021AnnualEvent eventbrite.com. Um, it's Taking Humor and Mental Health. And Dr. Bellis is a stand-up comedian and psychotherapist. And it's going to be a great evening and we all do need a laugh. And also take a minute to check out Fairfield Cares website and social media for the many activities, um, throughout May, which is, as you all know, is Mental Health Awareness Month. So now here are my personal remarks. And most of you know me through my numerous volunteer activities in town over the years. You may not be familiar with my personal background as an immigrant from Germany who came to the US as a young adult in 1993. My home country's reckoning with its shameful past continues to fuel my passion to not remain idle when injustices occur. Dr. Martin Luther Jr.'s quote, "The time is always right to do what is right," is prominently displayed in my home. Sometimes by not saying something, the strongest message is sent. Only when acknowledged can racism be confronted and a community move forward towards an equitable future. And you might think it should be self-evident by one's actions. It is not. It needs to be repeatedly publicly stated by our leaders. Holding one community forum and one educational webinar last year has not reached those who believe that there is no racism in Fairfield. They need to hear from the town's leadership loudly and clearly repeatedly. This is the time to publicly demonstrate to all people of Fairfield that racism in all forms will not be tolerated here. There is no need to go into great detail about the most recent incidents. A racist act against one child is a racist act against all. And every child in Fairfield deserves to be loved and welcomed by the community. Do not wait for the blueprint from the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force to do what you know is right. Our young people look to our town's leaders for cues on how to conduct themselves and to gain a sense of self as part of our community. If they see our town leaders actively working to ensure an equitable and welcoming community that values black and brown lives equally to all lives, they will do the same. We cannot put the burden of educating our young people on this topic that can literally mean life or death solely on our school system. As we all know, the stool cannot stand on one leg alone. And while it might sound corny, it still takes a village to raise a child. Thank you for listening to me.
Brenda.
Sorry, I was on mute. Thank, thank you Renee. Go ahead Nancy.
I just want to thank, um, both Amy for her work and her words tonight. And, and Reine, I really appreciate, uh, what you had to share. You and I have talked about this in other occasions about your own reckoning and, and the work that you've done and what fuels you. And I really appreciate, uh, your comments today and, and just want to thank you. And, um, and I agree and, and just, uh, hope that we can continue to show with actions and words where we stand. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Tom, would you like to make any comments?
I'd, I'd like to thank both ladies for their commentary. I do think the, uh, the topic is appropriate. I do look forward to hearing what the, the task force comes back with. I do think that was a big step for the town in ensuring we addressed this issue. And, uh, I appreciate them coming and speaking to us today. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I, I appreciate Renee's comments. And like I have said repeatedly over this past year, um, we, we, we all take a part in this, not just leaders, but every single individual who lives in this town uh, has a responsibility to live a life that is appropriate and to treat everyone with respect and dignity. And that's really important. And that's how I believe we make real change, is by living lives that, that display that, that show that. And so I try to do that every day in my actions and deeds. And I, I, I hope everybody in our community does that. And this whole thing is, is, is so sad, really. So sad. And, um, sadly, I don't think it'll be our last, you know, it's not going to be the last then. Um, and so us talking about it and, and making sure that we're doing things to, to address it. But like Tom said, or Nancy said, we're, we're not going to address it just by one task force. Um, or even all the recommendations that will come out of the task force. This has to be ongoing work that our community does all the time. And, um, I think it would be a really appropriate and helpful, I think, Nancy, for their next meeting to have an update from your ta- you know, from your task force, just to get, you know, not just for the board, but also for, um, for the public, just to hear about the work that you're doing and some of the stuff. Because I think that would be beneficial, um, not just to us, right, but, um, to, to our community as a whole.
We have a meeting Thursday. I will share your invitation.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you ladies both. I do appreciate you taking the time to sit through this very long meeting today, uh, to, to provide comments. But, you know, again, you don't always, you don't have to sit through a long meeting. You can always call either any of us on the phone. I'm always, uh, I try my best to return every phone call. I do get a lot. Uh, but I, I try my best to make sure I get back in touch with everyone and that I'm available. So, um, if we don't have any further, uh, items, do either one of you have any additional items that you wanted to bring up?
I do not this evening.
Okay. All right, well, next. A motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Have, have a good night.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.